Okay, being on about 7:00 PM, Foxborough Planning Board meeting will come to order. We have a continued public hearing for special permit slate plan west side of Route 1 to construct four new parking lots and perform improvements to four existing parking lots by MPS LLC. For those of you who are in the room, if you're not from out of town or you have any plans on speaking, you do need to sign, there should be a form over there for you can just sign your name and address, so we have it. And just as an FYI, I know that there's been a couple of letters that have come in that pretty much with some minor exceptions have been repetitious of items that were spoken about at the last meeting and some additional requests in there. But I'm going to limit commentary this evening because this hearing process is not going to end tonight. I know that there are some more testings that have to go on by the engineering firm. And unless someone has something new and different from everything we've heard already for this evening, I'm going to just limit the discussion. When the Craft Group comes back with any alterations or changes based on both the site walk and any further engineering reports, then we'll get back into having commentary about what you see presented at that time. So that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Krantz or whomever from the group is going to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. Good evening. I think I'd like to reintroduce my team. We have Peter Tam from Gulston Stores on Zoom tonight. We have Kevin Goggins from Gulston Stores here with us tonight. I have Brittany and Derek from VHB, our civil engineers. I believe Jeffrey Dirk from Van Assen Associates will be joining us via Zoom as well. And then I have myself, Dan Krantz, Matt Bukarski, and Beth Wierling from the Craft Group as well.
Hold on one second. For those just coming in, if you could sign in, please. Thank you. Sorry, Dan.
So just to follow up on our centralized parking after our site visit last week, we're interested to speak with the Board and have some dialogue and get some feedback. We did hear that just because you can't doesn't mean you should. We believe we have taken these comments into consideration. We do, however, need to maintain our control of our parking and the operations thereof, so this is an important matter for us. Future development of ours and those of other satellite owners are a part of this consideration as well, as well as the safety of our patrons. And we do not consider these spaces to be optional. Lot 55B and Lot 40 have been modified, and we'll talk a little bit about those tonight. Prior to our last meeting, we had, as we talked about, had already previously modified Lot 42C, so you won't see any dramatic changes to Lot 42C. But at this time, I'll turn it over to Kevin with a few comments.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you hit it on the head earlier. We do owe you a few items that we'll have at the next meeting that we'll have peer review response for. We did want to just take this opportunity to talk about the site walk that everybody went on, go over a few modifications that have been made to the plan, that Brittany will walk you through on those as well. And hopefully, you know, we'll get to the point where the Board is comfortable with the plans that we're presenting.
Okay.
And as I said, I'll turn it over to Brittany now.
Thank you. So there's three main things we want to go through today, and we are going to try to keep this short, sweet, as brief as possible. We do not want to be repetitious either.
One second. Dan, could you move the microphone closer to her, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not want to be repetitious from anything we went through last week. We just want to discuss some changes and some updates and then pass it off to you and here we have to sign. So the three things we want to go through are responses to comments, where we stand on those. The second thing will be site plan updates. And then third will be some operational considerations based on what we've heard. So response to comments. We have received the third-party peer review letter from Environmental Partners. We did receive that prior to the last hearing. Earlier this week, we formally submitted responses to the parking and traffic comments. We are still finalizing some field work for the stormwater comments. That's just collecting additional soil data, groundwater data, existing condition data. That work's all complete, so we're updating the report. No substantial changes whatsoever to the design. It's just confirming our assumptions. Some minor modifications, but the original design is essentially what will be resubmitted. We hope to get that all back to you next week, back to Environmental Partners, so that they can review it as well. The second item we want to discuss, we've heard a couple times asking about MIPA review. This project will be subject to MIPA review, and we do intend to file a notice of project change with the MIPA office at the completion of this local process. So that's on the to-do list. We just wanted to get through this first with you guys. And while we're talking about MIPA, I just want to mention that the parking lots that we're proposing have actually already, portions of the project have already been reviewed and certified by MIPA in a prior filing back in 2009. When we went to MIPA for their review of some office development across the street, we showed parking lots in these exact locations. And so the plan that was reviewed and certified here by MIPA back in 2009 is on the screen. And you can see in the upper left-hand corner, that is the location of the Lot 44 that we're discussing. And just on the right-hand side of that orange line, which is the EDA line, is the 42C lot. So two of these lots that are subject of a lot of discussion here have already been reviewed and certified by MIPA. This is still a viable project that was reviewed. So moving along to site plan updates, we heard what everyone has said at the last hearing. We heard what was said at the site walk, so we've made a few changes. What you can see on this plan, this is what we submitted. We submitted with a berm, a planted berm behind 42C. All of the lots are fenced all the way around, and we submitted with a berm behind Lot 42C. And the changes that we are proposing since this submission, two changes. One, to Lot 44, we're proposing to the pinch point where we get the closest to the property line, we're proposing to pull that in. And then over on 55B, where we're closest to the property line, we're pulling that in and adding a berm over there. So I'll zoom into each one of those.
Is that the one where the house?
Yes. So first, starting with Lot 44. This plan on the left is what was submitted with the squared-off pinch point. And so what we're proposing is to round off that parking lot to provide us a bit more buffer and allow us to maintain some more of the existing vegetation on our side of the property line. And then moving on to Lot 55B. What we're proposing is, again, to eliminate a half of a parking and add a six-foot-tall berm that falls line and turns the corner around that parking lot. So there will be a planted berm on that side now.
How high?
Six feet. One of the other things, we just wanted to take a step back and explore what are some of the conditions adjacent to our property, some comparable developments. And so we took a look at the abutting industrial park and their limits of building and pavement and the limits of their development in proximity to the town line. So what you can see here, this green line, it's just a graphic, but it generally shows the width of the vegetated buffer between those existing industrial, commercial developments and the town line. And if you take that same exact line and change the width or anything, just took that line and moved it, it generally lines up with the proposed separation that we're providing. So we are comparable to the adjacent developments.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yep.
You need to keep in mind that when those uses were approved, there were conditions there that limited their operations, which would not be in line with the same type of evening and nighttime things relative to different events and games that you guys would have. So I don't disagree with you in terms of the distance, but just keep that in mind.
Understood, yep.
Okay.
And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Matt, who's going to discuss some of the operational considerations based on what we've heard over the last hearing of the site walk.
Great, thank you. For the record, Matthew Bukarski, Director of Construction Development with the Craft Group. As, you know, between Dan and Kevin and Brittany, you know, we did hear through the last public hearing, through the comments that have been submitted and the informal discussion around the site walk that we had, you know, a few common themes, if you will, in terms of the some concerns from an operational perspective, I guess is the best way to put it. And we kind of summed them up into four general categories, and the first being kind of storage. And that's encompassing of two areas as it relates to many of the comments that were either spoken or provided, and that's the Portageon storage that historically has happened in the corner of Lot 42, as well as the soil stockpile that's in that corner that's used for some of the events that are held inside the stadium. We heard it, quite honestly, just as a full, for background purposes, the only reason the Portageons were ever stored there is really because we're just trying to consolidate them for the offseason, the winter months, and keep them shielded from the wind. As you guys know, the wind up there can be pretty significant, and we can't leave them scattered about through the parking lot, they'll all just blow over. For us to relocate those and put those into a different location is not anything, you know, difficult. There's no magic reason why they have to be in that corner. So in light of this project, we're perfectly, you know, fine with proposing another alternative location within P-10 and P-11. That wouldn't be, would be consistent and no closer than what it historically has been in the past as a result of this. Same thing with the soil. The soil, it was just, it's, again, it's just the location that was chosen, and that's where it's always been. But we are certainly appreciative of its proximity to the neighbors, and we can find a location that would be more suitable for that as it relates to that location. The second thing was referred to as the trash removal and then what I presume to be the noise associated with that. You know, from, without getting too far into the detail here, from an operational standpoint, it's not as simple as just picking up trash, right? It's, we call it the post-event clean, so it doesn't matter what the event is. You know, by, I believe it's 72 hours. By the way, the bylaws are written in the town, a parking lot has up to 72 hours to clean their trash. Well, we've never adhered to that. In the last 20 years, we've had a same consistent policy. Our goal is to get the parking lots cleaned basically by sunrise the next day. A lot of factors go into that, mainly the biggest one being the time of the event. A 1 o'clock's certainly different than an 8:30, you know, football game. And then the second biggest thing is weather, you know, warm sunny night versus a cold, snowy event. And the last thing is really labor, you know, especially now in this market. It's, you know, prior years, not as much of an issue, but now getting labor to actually, you know, perform that is difficult. And on that note, I mean, there's really only one good way to do it, right? It's, as much as we put out trash barrels and we want people to pack their stuff up, we know they don't. And when you have trash, you know, tossed around the parking lots, we need to pick it up, it's our responsibility. The only way to do it is to walk the lot, and you literally have to physically walk the lot. That takes anywhere from typically 60 to 80 people to do. And in this market, it's difficult to come up with those people. No one, it's, let's face it, it's picking up trash, it's bending over, it's difficult work. We're fortunate enough to have a good group of people that do come in, though, and they do a, what I think is a fantastic job for something that not a lot of people necessarily want to do. So we're fortunate to have those people helping us out in that regard. Generally speaking, we start on the east side, and we work our way, you know, up to Route 1 and then eventually across Route 1. And that's only because that's generally the way the traffic in the parking lot's empty. We obviously can't clean it until people are gone. So that's kind of why, you know, P-10 and P-11 historically always the last lots to be kind of picked and cleaned up. As a result of this project and the expansion of these lots, you know, based on our 20 years of experience in really fine-tuning this, you know, this operation, we don't expect that to change as a result of this project. You know, the expectation is we continue to operate and clean our parking lots in a similar manner so that we can, you know, as a rule of thumb, try to have everything cleaned and ready by sunrise the next morning. Which, you know, I'll point out that not necessarily every parking lot up and down Route 1 does that either. Some of them wait. If we don't do it, then there's a lot of factors that come into play. Weather is the biggest one. If it's snowing, you know, or things like that, we don't want to get the trash mixed with the snow. Second biggest thing is if we're not doing it by sunrise, our crows and seagulls will be flocking around here and picking through the trash, and I don't think anybody wants that either. So we try to be mindful of that, and we do everything we can to get the parking lots cleaned up as efficiently after an event. The third thing is, was referred to in a lot of the comments as kind of these special events or these, I like to call them experiential events, you know, whether it's magical lights, the dinosaur events and things like that. I think just as, for the purposes of the Board and for everyone to understand, that's a relatively new phenomenon at Gillette Stadium. We, if you go back over the last 20 years, that's really a byproduct of COVID and the pandemic. It really only started in 2020. We've had different, like, smaller ride-and-drive events and things like that within the paved portion of P-10 in the center, but we haven't historically had events like that. And nor do we necessarily expect them to continue to be this growing business, and it's not our core primary business either in that regard. As we sit here today, there are no booked or known events that are coming up. You know, there is no dinosaur tour that's coming back or anything like that, and nor do we expect them to be coming in future years either. I think that was my own personal opinion, I think that was kind of tied to the pandemic, right? It was an offshoot of that. From a, you know, never say never, if it were to come back and were to happen, I think what we're committed to saying is that we would operate those no different than we have in the past, and we would commit to be no closer than to the property lines than we were in the past. So we wouldn't be looking to put those events in Lot 55B, in Lot 42C, or Lot 44. If they were to come back, you know, they would stay in where, no closer than they currently were historically. The last thing I wanted to touch on was just kind of this, we called it the law enforcement coordination here. There was some common themes within the feedback from the abutters about people parking in the adjacent neighborhoods, walking through their yards to access, you know, through the woods to get to the stadium presumably. We touched on this last time. Again, we can only control what's in our property. We do have security in the parking lots, we do put fencing up, we try to put the appropriate measures in to stop that. The one thing that we talked about briefly last time is this ongoing coordination that we have with the public safety officials. So many of you know we have this all-agency meeting prior to every single event where all law enforcement and public safety officials get together. We identify things like this. We give, we coordinate with them, they request the resources, we provide the resources to the extent that we can for them to operationalize and address those concerns. Historically, over 2021, and this is consistent through prior years, is we, on average, we've, for all major stadium events, had at least seven detail officers within wall pole. How they get deployed and where they go, obviously, that's not at our discretion, that's going to be between the chief of wall pole and police and the chief here in Foxborough. If there were requests that came up relative to this, and the chiefs bring that to us, and there's an additional need for resources, if it's reasonable, we never turn down those requests. So that's something that we would obviously continue to look at and coordinate event by event. So those are just a few of the things. And the last thing I'd like to say, just kind of concluding, is to pick up on Dan's point about, you know, the need for these parking spaces. When we look at the total numbers, and I was just pulling the numbers before we left, on the corridor as a whole, there's 28,600 or so spaces. About 20% of that is not controlled by us. So this is about development. This is about utilizing the EDA and the S1 area and the development opportunities that are here that benefit Foxborough and preserving the operations of the stadium as well. You know, we have to be in control of our own destiny here, and we have to be in control of our own operations. We can't control if a satellite lot chooses to shut down and develop for whatever reason and no longer park cars. Our fans are still going to come down, so part of this is addressing that. Part of this is addressing our future plans as well. So I just wanted to reiterate that to Dan's earlier point as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our formal presentation.
Questions?
Quick question, just to confirm. 44 and 45 are the only lots that are outside the EDA?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sure about that.
So that means the ones in are by right.
Yeah, you haven't talked here about any lighting considerations, other than just now with Matt, special events. I assume you use portable units up there when need be? Or will there be actual hard lighting installed?
There'll be hard lighting installed. It's consistent with what's out in P-10 and P-11 now. So there'll be, you know, permanent poles put in with LED lighting. It's all been designed to be compliant within the site, the standards, cutoff fixtures at all the edges along, zero cutoffs.
And a photo metrics plan showing all that has been submitted as part of the plans.
Well, you're giving us a lot of paperwork, you know.
Well, we've thought about this a lot.
Part of that, Jeff, will be that these will be LED fixtures, they'll have photo heads on them so that, you know, if they're not turned off, they'll turn off, so.
Right. But just presumably, to your points about post-event cleanup, those lights are on until those people clear, right?
Correct, yeah. They obviously need the light to be able to see what they're doing.
Okay.
But we don't, we've eliminated, with the exception of a few locations on Route 1, we don't have the light towers anymore. They're just, they're an operational nuisance, to be quite frank. And then with LED lighting now, you can put spotlights in strategic locations and replace a lot of those locations that we have. We used to use that lighting, which could be noisy and things like that.
Is there a curfew on lots, like the lots close at boom? Like, people can't hang out for the, you know, is there a date? Is there a date? Is there a time, like X hours after an event?
I can't, I don't know the, I don't know the official answer relative to the event licensing. I'm not 100% certain that you guys know that.
I don't know the event license off the top of my head. You know, I do know that we are subject to the licensing requirements that we've talked about. We're also responsible for complying with any of the general ordinance of the town as well. So nuisance, noise, any of those other general ordinance, we need to comply with as well.
Is there any, I know you talked about the trash, and I totally get it, the birds and everything, and it flying around. Is, is there any willingness to pick up the trash the next day?
I think the challenge is you're going to have the birds and you're going to have, you know, all of that, they're going to pick through and get into the bags and it's just going to...
Even overnight?
Yeah. Well, I mean...
Once the sun comes up.
Yeah, once they're coming up. It's not like you can just go out and pick it up, right?
Yeah.
And part of this, too, is just when you have the resources here to keep them...
Right, to keep them going.
Yeah.
What about, there's been concern raised by the abutters regarding that they're on wells and concern over contamination. That wasn't something you all addressed here, but I, you know, I know that you guys have gone through your due diligence regarding it, but I think it'd be helpful.
I guess my response to that would be that there is a natural high point that just happens to follow the town line and the property line, and all of this stormwater discharges, it flows in a, it's an easterly direction.
So that would be towards Route 1?
Correct, yeah, correct. And, I mean, the stormwater management system has been designed in compliance with the DEP Stormwater Management Handbook and reviewed by a third-party peer reviewer.
Thank you.
And there was a note in there about gasoline spills and things like that, and those are, you know, quite honestly, DEP-regulated, and so we have to deal with those as outlined by DEP. So if that occurs, we need to clean it up, notify cleanup and take care of it per DEP requirements.
And just adding to that, as part of the stormwater management report, we've prepared a standalone stormwater operation and maintenance plan that has been reviewed by the peer reviewer. And there is a section in there regarding storm, excuse me, spill prevention and what the protocol is, how you clean it up, how you consolidate it, who you notify in the town. So there is a whole section in that standalone operation maintenance plan referring to spill prevention.
What about open fires? Are open fires allowed?
Again, I don't, I haven't seen the latest versions of the permits, whether they're not. I know it's, generally speaking, it's been a topic of discussion with, you know, between public safety officials and stuff. Our official communication that we're trying, we're trying to discourage it or limit it, and I believe the way our website is wording the item, it's like, basically self-contained, so people bring in like the fire pits and things like that. If it's a self-contained, we don't want people just randomly starting fires and putting logs and things like that on the ground, especially on the paved surfaces, let alone, you know, the dirt either, but...
Thank you.
We try to enforce it as best we can, I mean, given the people, the volume.
Brittany, do you anticipate, when you're involved in reconfiguring the topography up there, do you anticipate either needing to introduce material from off-site or take material off-site, or is everything just moved around?
We anticipate this will generally be a fill project, so they will need to bring in fill material from off-site onto the site. As part of our construction documents, we prepare specifications for every element of site construction, but one of those elements is earthworks, and it specifies exactly what type of fill they can bring in. It has to be clean fill, it has to meet a certain set of criteria. So we do anticipate it'd be a fill site, but all that fill will need to meet our specifications.
And there's third-party inspectors that verify that.
And generally speaking, from our overall site balance and cut fill analysis, the only lot that's really in a fill is going to be, you know, the graphic up, it's going to be 43, is that enough?
Yeah, it's one that's approximate location to Route 1. It's not, the ones that are on the perimeter of the site are generally balanced.
So were you guys in receipt of this letter from Tara Spellman that was dated March 23rd? So in her letter, she just talks about under stormwater management, that there have been instances in the past, and she's not specifically calling you guys out about it, that there's a, there was a basin between the lot and Cobble Hill Road that sometimes overflows, and she's concerned that when you do additional work up there, that either through filling or, you know, whatever else is going to happen with the new retention basins or detention basins, that that could be an ongoing thing. So I just want you to be aware of that, and please take it into consideration when you're balancing everything and... I don't know if there's any history that the town has about that, about any flooding onto their, onto their properties or the roadway, or any information that you can get that would assist you in that.
Sure, and if I may, so the basin that they're referring to is, it's not on our property, it's in Walpole. And we actually flagged that as a wetland, and so we are staying more than 100 feet away from that basin. And then, I don't want to be repetitive, but there is a natural high point, really, between the two properties. So there's a high point that's higher than our basin. So the new basins that we're proposing overflow onto a net road or towards a net road. They, it's not even, water doesn't flow uphill, so it can't overflow up towards their homes.
Okay.
The other item I just want to mention, there is the existing basin that has, and I won't go into specifics, but that has approximately 200,000 cubic feet of volume. We're proposing two new basins that both have more than 200,000 cubic feet of volume. So although we are replacing that one basin, we're replacing it, we're doubling the volume that's provided. And the stormwater analysis that went into it, it assumes, it takes into account the woods that are there and that we're changing that into gravel. So we use a program called HydroCAD that's being reviewed by the third-party engineer, but it takes into account the topography and the vegetation and that we're modifying that, and hence why we're doubling the storage that's provided.
Thank you.
And will sue the engineering on that at our next meeting?
I would be happy to go through it. I mean, this is the stuff I live for, but most people, most people fall asleep.
Is that part still being designed?
No, that's part of the original submission.
The original, okay.
Yeah, so we submitted a stormwater management report with the original filing that was already reviewed by the peer reviewer. And they provided us comments. A lot of it was looking for additional detail, we had to go out and do some more test pits. We've completed that work, some additional survey work as well. So we're revising the design to meet in accordance with their comments, but it's not a substantial change to the design. It's really clarification and a few edits here and there.
All right.
But that's already been submitted and reviewed.
I've never seen her so happy with that.
I would love to, I mean, I could go into graphics and numbers, and most people don't want to hear that.
For your onsite stormwater, and forgive me, I'm not totally knowledgeable in this area, but I'm thinking that is, since we're dealing with a permeable surface here, that some of this is groundwater as well in wet periods?
Some of what is groundwater?
It can't all be runoff, can it?
Some of what?
Water, stormwater going into the detention bases.
So...
Because you've got a permeable surface up there.
Right, and the proposed basins are designed to be at least four feet above estimated seasonal high groundwater. So the basins are designed so that groundwater doesn't come up out of them, so that we have enough separation. And it's really from a treatment perspective. The best way to treat stormwater is to recharge it, and so the stormwater standards require that we have four feet of separation. And so the stormwater standards require that we have four feet of separation at a minimum between the bottom of the basin and groundwater. So you have four feet of treatment before your stormwater gets into the groundwater.
So there must be industry norms when you're dealing with that type of surface. How much of it ends up just filtering down right where it is as opposed to?
Oh, from the gravel surface? Yeah, it's, so we design, we use what we call curve numbers, and it goes from 0 to 100. And woods, vegetation, that has a curve number of about 35 or so, whereas pavement has a curve number of 98, which says that essentially 98% of storm, of rain is gonna flow off your site, whereas in the woods, you know, only 35%. And so a gravel lot, I think, is a curve number of 96. So it's essentially, we've designed it, it's nearly pavement.
I'm surprised I had to add that.
So would I.
Yeah, no, I'm thankful you made some adjustments on the berm behind that blue colonial that was there. That definitely needed some attention, I thought, from our walkthrough. And by just pulling back another 13 feet on 42, 44.
44, yeah.
I think that made a big difference.
I'd be happy to see that.
Yeah, plus rounding that as well gives them a lot more separation.
A little bit more blow for there.
Yeah, I just had a question about the delayed exit. I know, you know, it makes sense to have it at the back, because like, why wouldn't you? You'd have it at the back. But again, you do control the flow and operation of all the site traffic. So just for example, like, is there a reason you couldn't do it, like, instead of the exit 40, parking lot 44, you know, doing it on 42A or something like that, like where you're not so close to the residences, and then over on the 55B, like, couldn't you use 54 instead? And again, you manage the traffic, so you can always put Jersey barriers or like controls across and say you can't leave now and flow it. It just seems that it would be kind to find a way to have those delayed exits not as close to the residential, to kinda put them on the interior. And I just don't see, it may not be the best, your easiest solution, and you might not be what you really want, but like, is there a middle ground here where you, getting away from the residences would help them?
I think, well, there's a couple of points that I guess I'd like to make is, and I tried to make this point last time, is we're showing them as delayed lots because that's kinda operationally where we think they make the most sense. But it's not to say that they're always gonna be used as that either, right? At the end of the day, it's a parking lot, it's a space, it's how we need to, you know, we need the space for whatever reason. And there's a lot of factors that could go into why we need it. I think generally speaking, out of the, right away anyways, when you look at the program, as much as we love to continue to see it grow, it's gonna reach a plateau where it's just not gonna get more people probably participating in it. And we're maximizing Lot 55 right now, around 1,000 to 1,200 or so, once we get into the throes of the season. And I talked last time about why that number goes up and down with the time of the events, things like that. By the fact that we're splitting it, I think we'll continue to have 55 would be, you know, I don't, I don't think it's gonna fill all of 55 right away. I don't even know if it's necessarily gonna fill all of 45 right away. My point being is 44 may not even become a delayed lot right off the bat. We just showed it because operationally it makes sense for it to be there. But if the demand is there, then obviously we need the ability to scale the, into those lots.
But I don't feel that you answered my question.
Yeah, I don't feel it.
So, but in terms of putting it somewhere in the middle, so the question becomes.
Not in the middle. I mean, well, maybe on that, but like, 54 is.
Just, I don't think we care where it is, but is there any chance to pull it in away from the residents? Pull it away from the residents, let's just say that.
I know it's not your preference, but is, can you not make it work?
It, like I said before, it's easier for us if we can have the lot be somewhat self-contained and not have to put a massive amount of, whether it's Jersey barrier or whatever, up in there or modify the existing lots. I think there's two parts of it, right? So from a customer service perspective, we don't necessarily wanna give someone who's basically getting free parking the best parking, right? Why should they necessarily park closer? So there's a lot of factors that go into this. It's not just about where the lot's necessarily gonna be. The other part of it is that I know everybody is focused on this as a delayed lot, but if you see it in operation, and I watched it for several years, there's nothing to say that someone's not gonna be parked in 42 and hanging out just as long afterwards because they choose to, right? So it, I think everyone has this preconceived notion that these lots are gonna be packed until the very last second. But it's generally, it's just trying to keep an overall mass or a balance of cars from coming out initially, right? And then they slowly release. Some people who stay in the delay lot don't even necessarily leave right away either, right? There's a little bit of a delay that comes out of there if they may be packing up or whatever the case may be. It allows us to take that initial crush of traffic, that pressure off of Route 1. That's the idea behind this. I don't know how else to explain it.
I think we totally get it, but I think you're not, you're saying that, no, your preference is to remain the way it is.
I think Paige, we hear your comments, and that's what we wanted to do tonight. And we know we're gonna be back in front of the board, so.
And I echo her comments.
Just as a general rule, delay or not delay, how long does it take you to clear that side of the street?
I'd like to say less than two hours, but depends on the volume.
Three maybe, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't say three, but the worst case is typically, now this is obviously, look, the biggest factor is something could happen on Route 1. That's beyond our control. But if everything goes perfectly well, and the worst-case scenario is a night game when everybody's generally trying to leave at the same time, you're probably looking at a solid, you know, two hours, two hours, 10 minutes. It used to be 2:20, 2:30 on a regular basis, but with the improvements we've made over the years, we've shaved off 15 to 20 minutes from that. Doesn't sound like a lot, but that's pretty significant when you're sitting in that lot trying to get out.
Could you also just, and I had forgotten to ask this before, just to address, once again, just to clarify a little bit, maybe I was a little bit confused, the use of a net road. And as it relates to, generally speaking, as well as how you talked about specifically related to the use of these delayed lots or spaces, as much as you can at this point.
Yeah, well, I mean, at this point, again, looking at it in developing the operational plan as it relates to the expansion of these lots, a net road is a natural way for us to, you know, take advantage of a public right-of-way to access, what, Lot 45 in particular, even Lot 44. I talked about it last time, that we're not looking to egress any traffic out of there until it's really safe to do so down at the other, at Lincoln Road at Route 1 because of the pedestrian traffic there. In terms of the ability to access, it's just, any, I think I said to this board quite a few years ago, that, I like to use the octopus example, right? We've always thought about traffic as Route 1 coming in and Route 1 going out, and that's great, but when you try to improve the experience for everybody, you need to have some relief valves, right? So any other areas where you can have take traffic and give another avenue for it to go, it's better, right? Because it makes the overall, the major movement on Route 1 better. So to the extent that we can pull traffic off or introduce it later on in the corridor when there's not as much friction from satellite lots and people walking across the entrance to the satellite, things like that, that we can push that traffic to the outer edges of the front door, if you will, of the stadium, that's a better, that's a good thing. And that's part of the reason why, you know, a net road is so attractive.
From an operational standpoint, how are those like fluid decisions on a game by, event-by-event basis, or?
It would be, so it's actively managed the way, and I mentioned it last time, that a net road has already been used. It was used last year with, in coordination with state and local police. So in the command post, parking department personnel are sitting there right alongside with state police in coordinating with local. We have a camera directly across the street from it, we can watch it, we can see exactly when the people are, when the wave of traffic is, of pedestrian traffic has subsided. There's a detail at that location anyways managing it. So between the coordination, it becomes a game time, real-time decision, right, as to when? And typically, that's where we know the 75-minute mark is more than enough time. It's typically less than 60 by the time the pedestrians are really cleared out down there.
So generally speaking, in terms of the coordination of the flow, is that controlled by local and/or the state police, or is it controlled by the guys who are in charge of your lots, or both?
It's both. It's a coordinated effort. But at the end of the day, there has to be a spot for the cars to go. So it's, you know, you're at the mercy of what happens on Route 1. All the lots are.
So people up there at a net road or people at P-10 know what's going on at P-11? Everybody's coordinating as it goes so that you don't?
For our lots, yes, 100%. It's all operationalized and everybody knows. And part of it too is that the ability to, again, this is getting into the details of it, but if you can picture a massive parking lot where everybody starts generally going in one direction, and now, because a net road's opened up, and this would go to Paige's point about why you can't just take like a Lot 41 and say use that, because if everybody's generally going in that direction, now you wanna try to send them that way, that's like herding cats, trying to get all those cars and now shift and go the other direction. So when you have a lot that you can contain and control up to a last-minute point and say, now I'll start going this way, it's a lot easier to do that. So there's those nuances that go into how you run the actual operation within the lot, and then how that coordinates and interfaces with the state police.
Also, I would think that if you're in the lot and it's really clogged going that way, all of a sudden, the police or the people who are controlling the lot are waving cars the other direction, they're gonna wanna take it, because they know they're not gonna sit there as long trying to get out.
Correct. And then, you know, three people, one of, creatures of habit, this is where everyone's going, I'm gonna follow that way, but the person to the right of them wants to go that way, and next you know they're trying to cut through and you get merging traffic, and it becomes chaotic.
One last quick question, Kevin, for Brittany.
Please.
This did come up in one of the letters, and what are your expectations for the necessity of blasting in this topography, you know?
Sure, so we have, we've done a ton of test pits last year, and then even just more recently in response to stormwater comments. And there is ledge throughout the site, but we've done our best to try to design the project to limit blasting. I don't wanna commit that it's absolutely not needed, but the intent is that we're trying to avoid blasting. And I think if we find during construction or beforehand that they need to blast, I am sure Dan's gonna call me and not be happy, and we're either gonna try to redesign around that or address it at that time. So we're not anticipating blasting, but.
To the south, it's, Brittany's being conservative, but to the south, I'd say that there's gonna be no blasting. I don't expect it based on.
I mean, we, that's why we have a fill lot.
The groundwater is the lowest point, and that has to be four feet above ledge. So, and everything has to flow to that. So based on the test pits we've done and the general topography, we're confident that it can all be working.
I think we did see a sizable outcrop on the northern side, right?
On Lot 55, that's a different story. So if that needs to be modified, that's gonna come down to, you know, probably a slight change in that corner, which unfortunately means a reduction in parking, but.
Although, could that be done mechanically?
It could be, but I think you would find that much more annoying with a whole rim than they would.
Yes, I've had one in my backyard. It's, a blast is one and done usually. That other thing sounds like a.
Quite honestly, as big as that look, that's one, maybe two blasts, to be honest, to get that out of there.
And of course, there'd be communication and heads up given to the neighbors prior to a blast.
There's a whole protocol of pre-blast surveys, and you photograph everything, and if there's an issue, you come back and you gotta.
Yeah, but it all comes full circle back to the original question of is this a cut or a fill site? That's why we're a significant fill site, at least on the south side, is because we're trying to avoid the ledge and blasting.
So I'm open to allowing people to speak, but only if they have anything new that they wanna talk about that hasn't been covered in the prior hearing, the letters, and the discussion this evening.
And just a reminder, we are not voting on this this evening.
Yeah, we will not be opposed this evening. So if you do have something you wanna add, please go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dawn Freiberger, 20 Concord Drive. I was on the site visit with you. I just wanted to clarify one thing. In 42C, which I am the closest a butter to.
Are you the one with the pool?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the one with the pool. You guys made a comment that you were happy to see that they moved that back a little bit. The markings that you saw on the site visit last week, that was the moved-backed area. Are you aware of that, unless I'm misunderstanding something?
No, that is correct.
So that's the 34 feet where the pins were last week?
We did not modify Lot 42C from last time, because that was something that we added the berm before we originally filed. So there is a berm in between the lot and the property line.
And how tall is that berm?
Six feet.
Trees on top?
Oh, yes. But as you can, I'm sorry.
So there is a little confusion in that it was not moved, you know, as part of the slight modifications.
So, but the point I'm trying to make is what you saw is what it is. Am I correct about that?
Yes, yes. So the new berm is gonna be, what'd you say, six feet?
Yes.
And the old berm was?
The lot behind adjacent to our house has not been modified from what we filed.
No, no, no. The old berm in the existing lot is how tall?
Oh, six.
Six, six to, I mean, it varies along, but yeah, six to seven feet in that same area, general area.
I think what you're remembering, Kevin, is our perspective, right? The parking lot looked much taller from where we were standing. So I think it was almost as if the berm was more than six feet.
Right, yeah, because it just looked taller. That's why I was asking.
So I guess, I guess my concern is, it sounds like you've, I think the word you used, pinch back some of the lots, and two, I don't remember the exact numbers of the lots. Why are you not doing that in 42C? That is by far, that lot is the closest to our homes of all the lots. And I know that lot is within your right to do, but that, we, those houses along there will by far have the biggest impact. And if you just eliminate that extending 42C, that would eliminate 322 cars, I believe, if I remember the exact number correct. And that doesn't seem like that is a big ask, given the scope of this project and how much it's going to affect our lives. Thank you.
That's 10% of your parking that you're increasing, right? 300, yeah.
Hi, Bruce Norwell, 19 Concord Drive. I was there on the site visit when you came out as well. And I know everyone appreciates you taking the time to do that, so. I guess on one hand, I'm encouraged a bit, because some of the issues that we've raised seem like they're at least being talked about. The storage items, the soil and the porta-potties, maybe moving those to another area. Delayed exit, talking about some of those things. Scaling back some of the parking lot events, or at least keeping it from encroaching more into our neighborhood. Coordinating with law enforcement, maybe getting some extra details on our neighborhood. And that's all well and good, but it doesn't really address, really, the primary concern we have. And you all saw the stakes right in people's yards and right up against the fence, and the buffer that is going to be eliminated, and the proposed berm that is going to supposedly replace what exists, but it's gonna be that much closer. And I guess, just to follow up on Dawn's point, I just wanna just point out, I know there were a couple of figures that were raised, that were pointed out in your, in the letter. We're talking about a 700-acre lot, 700-plus acre lot here, complex. There are 22,888 existing spots. We're proposing to add 3114 for a total of 26,000. And as Dawn said, this 42C, really, that's what we're concerned about. I know there's other people that are gonna talk about 55, and there's other people that are gonna talk about 44. But really, it's 42C that we're particularly concerned about, because it comes right up. And as Dawn said, it really, it's probably the entire, I tried to look at all the maps that are posted on your website, and it seems like in the entire Gillette Patriot Place complex, we are probably the most directly-impacted residential area. And I know there was a comparison that was made about the commercial buildings on a net road, but as you pointed out, I mean, we're talking about apples and oranges, really, the type of use that's there. We weren't there when those were proposed, and I don't know what kind of opposition was expressed then, but I know what kind of opposition we're expressing now. So you saw how close it is. And in the grand scheme of 26,000 spots, parking spots, to scale it back by 322, that's what's being proposed in 42C. To scale it back by that, it seems like it really is just such a minimal impact on the overall operations. I cannot believe that that is the critical linchpin for the successful operation of that stadium. So I just wanted to leave that with you.
Good evening, I'm Jim O'Neil, 3 Foxent Trail in Walpole. And as I told you last time, I'm on the select board, and a town meeting member as well. In the spirit of not regrinding things that have already been talked about, I did have one question from the last time I was here that I don't think I heard an answer to, which was the trees, and how many trees were being removed? Did you hit that? I was a couple minutes late getting here. Did you guys hit that?
No.
Would the board like me to respond?
Yeah, please.
Cumulative of all the lots. Cumulative of all the lots that we're proposing, the lots on the perimeter of the property, all of the lots along the perimeter, is a total of approximately 14 plus or minus acres of new disturbance, all of those lots together.
So, no one, I don't think anybody's counted the number of trees.
And I, and of course, don't actually mean the number of trees, I, I meant, you know, the acres, so that's very helpful, so thank you. That's a lot of acres, that's existing buffer from the residence's point of view, and, you know, again, without restating everything that's been said, we'd really appreciate if you, you know, consider what that all means. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Please. One thing the neighbors have shared repeatedly is the lack of a police presence at the top of the street, and it's something that the Kraft fam, the Kraft family, the Kraft Organization funds, they do it in Foxborough, I know they do that there. So, have you had any discussions with your police, your police and fire chief regarding, you know, it can't, the weight of trying to help these people cannot sit solely on Foxborough, Walpole and Norfolk need to step up, you're representing Walpole. Have you had the chance to talk to the police chief about this?
I have, actually, and the town administrator, and the police chief will be in front of us in another, and it's either the next meeting or the one after that for his monthly update. And I've asked for a complete rundown of exactly what we do, how many detail officers are down there, how they cover the area, because they seem to spend most of their time down on like Schufelt Road and down toward the little South Walpole Common Area. And if you go down there, you'll see that there's a lot of signage about no parking down there, but if you go down Cobble Knoll and Concord Drive, not so much. And so, I'm going to be pressing that point.
Good, thank you.
And of course, I don't want to be putting signs up and causing trouble with the neighborhood, so I'll be interested in getting your point of view on that, but, but that is something I've observed and something that I am working directly with the town minister and the police chief on. So, I, I heard that feedback loud and clear and intend to resolve that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just that one question, I'm sorry. You talked about the lights, that you were going to be installing some lights, are those lights going to be right along the fence line of 42C, 44, the new proposed fence line?
I have to take a look, but if they are, I'm sorry, just a moment.
Come right ahead.
I have to take a look, but if they are, there, there will be cutoffs, and we've prepared photometric plans to demonstrate that the, the light will not extend across the property line.
Because I thought, when I looked at the, the plans, I thought I saw that, that there were, the proposed lighting was going to be right along the new fence line. That's, again, that much closer, so I, obviously, that's a concern.
But if the lighting's along the fence line and it projects into the parking lot, you have zero spill to the neighbors, which...
If that's, if that's accurate, if that's accurate, that's great, but I, I don't know that that would be the case, so...
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Christina Walsh, I live at 240 Summer Street in Walpole. I apologize, my husband and I weren't able to attend the last meeting. I did notice you made some adjustments to the, this lot, specifically my neighbors, and I spoke with someone here at the town before attending, just to a little bit learn more about this map. And according to what they told me, it's literally just going to be like a chain-link fence along my back.
Which lot are you talking about?
Oh, 55B. So, I, the Blue Colonial, I believe, is the house that is my neighbor's house, so my last name is Walsh. So, although in this drawing, it looks like there's a lot of shrubbery, my back property line is about a two-foot wall, stone, stone wall. From my kitchen window, I can see the orange flag, so that would be just a chain-link fence along my, practically my whole back property line. I know the drawing looks like there's a bunch of greenery, but it's just a little short stone wall, so I know you, and it's supposed to be just 10 feet behind my stone wall. And I know there was adjustments made to my neighbor, but as far as I know, that was the only thing that would be protecting my little swing and everything in my backyard from cars and people in the back, so just a concern.
Brittany, could you pull that back up, please?
Yep. So, the, the proposed berm on the right-hand side, we are proposing that it will wrap the corner.
So, this is my neighbor's house, this is a corner, so my house is, you aren't showing my house?
Yeah, but that, that triangle is part of her property.
It's part of my property, but that's not where my house is.
Yeah, this figure doesn't show the house, you're correct, yeah.
Yeah, so, do you have something that shows my property?
Uh, yes. It doesn't really zoom into it. I don't have anything that shows, no, I don't.
What are you, are you asking a question or asking for something?
I'm asking for more than just 10 feet behind my stone wall and a chain-link fence, that would be the whole back of my property. If there's adjustments made to my neighbors, there's going to be a berm, and it sounds like potentially trees, I mean, there's not going to be any trees, there's going to be nothing in between the whole back of my property, between a two-foot stone wall and then a chain-link fence.
Can you take a look at that?
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for you. Would you be open to us using a corner of that property, of your property, to put a berm across through that?
Um, we would look, we would look at all options.
If you have that big triangle, it...
Yeah, we'll look at all options, but we'd like something to be, a little more, more protection to our house.
Hi, I'm Tara Stellman, I'm 21 Freedom Trail in Norfolk. I sincerely appreciate the fact that you guys came out for the site walk, I think it was, it's much more impactful for you to see what the topography is, the impact that it's going to have on us. I've outlined my concerns, I have another question that wasn't addressed today, and it's been kind of danced around. So, it's the access road, the use of a net road versus the already-existing access road within the property of the lots that goes directly out to Route 1 at the lights at Patriots, at Bass Pro Shop. So, there is a, there's an already-existing road, so why are the plans to use a net road for the delayed lots, when all the traffic's gone, when there's no pedestrian concerns, to push traffic further down? I understand that during the height of traffic, but if, if it's to empty out the delayed lots, there would be no pedestrians at Bass Pro, there would be no pedestrians, the traffic would dissipate at that stage, there are troopers staged there, there's a light there. That seems to be, to me, a much more solid plan with less interruption to all of the neighbors.
In what way?
You're going to be running all the cars out of 44, 42, and 45 down a net road. There's houses that are behind a net road, so you're going to run them down a net road...
But it is a public way.
I understand it's a public way.
You're just asking if they'll reconsider?
I'm asking, I guess, the question was asked at the first meeting about that, and it was really not answered. So, I'm asking for further exploration as to why an existing road that's on the property is not being used.
So, I'm going to ask Mr. Krantz to answer that in a moment, or one of his representatives, but I have a question for you.
Sure.
How do the, how do the satellite lots that are there exit, don't they exit down a net road as it is?
I, I don't know of any satellite, the only lot that I know of that's on a net road is sometimes there's people parked at Metro Pac. And it, most is probably 50 cars.
Okay.
It's not 300 or, or however many are going to be in 44, 45, and emptying out of 42.
Can I answer that, or can someone on your team answer it?
Mr. Dirk. Are you available?
It's like talking...
He is. Hello, Jeffrey.
You're on mute.
I am available, the man on the screen. One of, one of the reasons that it's not being used is, I think we had said at the last meeting, is that the, the intersection really is not designed to accommodate that egress by way of that driveway. That's, that's a temporary access really meant for conveying traffic or, or service vehicles up to service the water tower, and it's not intended to be an egress from those lots, it's not designed for that, nor is the intersection designed for it. The, the other consideration is that the traffic management plan for the stadium, I think as we had mentioned at the last meeting, is purposely set up in a way to handle the traffic coming down a net road, and the timing of the release of that traffic has been set so that as the traffic is releasing from the delayed lots, the traffic in that lane on the curb side is reduced to the level that we can add the traffic from the delayed exit lot. So, I think it's a, it's a couple of things. The, the existing intersection and roadway is, are not designed for having traffic exit from the lots. And then, the a net road connection, I think as others have mentioned, it's currently being used as an egress for some of the, the private lots, and what we're intending to do is to utilize its capacity to exit the, the proposed lots, in particular, the delayed exit lots, so that we're using the capacity that's created after the majority of the stadium traffic has already exited.
Okay. My other request is to review the changes to the back end of 44. There is, there's no berming, there's no vegetation, all that's going to be there is a chain-link fence. If you walk the perimeter of the parking lot, the entire parking lot is bermed with vegetation with a fence. So, why would there be any difference, why would there be any difference for this particular lot? And I mean, there's a berm, there's a berm next to the lots on the far side of Route 1 where there's industrial property already, so why are you treating the neighbors behind 44 any differently?
Isn't, you pulled this back?
We did, we pulled it back.
Is there a berm?
There's not a berm on this one.
That's where they, they, they took the, what, from 24-foot to the property line, back to 32 feet.
Right, they moved it back, but it's still going to be level, it's not going to be bermed, it's, they, they'll add some vegetation that's already there, but they're not going to add to the vegetation, they're not going to add any height, so the, the sound, the people's direct access into our yard is hopping over a six-foot fence.
Is there a reason a berm wasn't considered there?
I, I would say on, on the opposite side of the, the property line, there is, what's interesting about this one, and you can actually see it in this, there, this, the blue line is the property line, and then, this is the town line, so there is, even though we're showing dimensions to the, the property line, there is almost a, a spite strip, so to say, of, of land that, in between our property and the property line. And then, in, in close proximity on the other side, I would say this is one of the more wooded areas on the abutting properties. This, this, the area in direct proximity is more vegetated, more wooded than some of the other abutting properties.
Correct.
That's the post. So, the only reason it's wooded is we've chosen for our property to be that way. We have the right, we could have cleared that all the way out, but we chose to leave it the way it is. I would just ask for the consideration to, to have the perimeter to the neighbors be the same all the way around. So, if they're going to, if you're going to put a berm up and require a berm for our neighbors in Walpole, please require a berm on the current, as well. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything before we make a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue a public hearing until?
Do you have a date?
There you go.
We've got the 14th.
14th. Could be problematic, I think, to get, by the time we get the report back to the third party.
Then the 28th.
I don't know that they'll have time.
We have too many things on that.
28th.
When's our next meeting scheduled after the 14th?
We have April 14th, April 28th, and then May 12th.
I will not be here on the 28th.
April 20th?
On May 2.
Yeah, May 26th.
No, she's, she's, she's not going to be on April 20th.
Yeah, that, that whole week I won't be here.
Well, April 28th you won't be here.
So, do you want April 28th, or do you want May 12th?
I would like to get through this.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to?
April 28th, sir?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Can we do April 28th, Diana?
We have two public hearings, so it wouldn't be until 7:45.
And you, did you say you're not here as well, Paige?
No, I'm here.
The 14th.
14th, she's not here, okay.
No, I'm here the 14th, we just have a lot already on there.
We're doing it the 14th, is the 28th. The 28th at 7:45. Does that work? Can you need a call-in, just let me know. I can zoom in.
No. Not for where you're going.
I promise I will, with, stay away from the adult, oh.
So, no additional notice will be sent out? You can always check with our office or on the website, if there's a continuation, does happen sometimes. So, what, 7:45 on the 28th?
Yep, so, second. Second?
Second.
Will this be a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
What, did it say 7?
45.
7:45, yeah.